Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off all cell phones during the meeting. These meetings are televised every day and normally they'd be broadcast live, but we have a technical difficulty with one of our cameras. So they are being recorded tonight and will be shown starting tomorrow afternoon. So we will begin with the called order with a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as the agenda tonight, there's been one additional item added, number 10. We'll have an executive session to have consultation with our city attorney, deem privilege in the attorney-pryant relationship, and that is number 10. So if those of you that looked at the agenda before, this is for -- this is the current agenda. First item on the agenda is consideration of the previous meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes from the June 13th, 2017 regular meeting as presented.
It's been moved and seconded.
Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. New business, citizen participation. Now, this is for items not listed on the agenda at this time, but during some of the things that we'll be considering later, the 926th Avenue, I will allow you to speak at that time if you care to speak, okay? So anything that's not on the agenda tonight, yes, sir, please state your name and address.
Mike Gould, 1054 Tenth Avenue. Previously, I brought to council attention of code enforcement issues that have not been addressed, and code enforcement has had in excess of a month and not dealt with them. I personally think City Commission should consider termination of the zoning and planning director and the code enforcement personnel over these facts. I would also like you to consider in the budget seizing coming up, reduction of zoning and planning's budget by 70 percent and reduction of code enforcement by 80 percent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Any other citizens care to speak on items that are not on the agenda today? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, general items, consider a city welcome sign.
All right. Assistant City Manager Taylor Tedder will start the discussion on this item.
Evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The hotel site at Fourth Metropolitan, the developer of the Fairfield Inn and Suites and the Town Place Suites, has always had on their site plan a space for a city welcome sign, and so he is allowing us to place a sign on the corner of Fourth and Metropolitan, which is right where the mouse is, there's where the retaining wall has been built and where the space for the sign would be located. So as people cross over the Centennial Bridge, it would be a statement piece for those coming into our community. The mayor and I met with Young Sign Company in May to discuss kind of the overall vision for the sign that staff and the mayor had for that sign, and we communicated to them to incorporate colors of the current hotels, stone brick of the current hotel, to try to incorporate those into the sign. We did receive these seven conceptual designs just late last week, and they're able to change anything about them. Basically, these are some very preliminary designs that we could use as to look at some things that you might like and things you don't like, to maybe narrow it down to a few, and then we could go in that direction to bring you what you'd like.
Okay.
So I can go ahead and pull them up on here if you'd like to go ahead and look at them.
Sure, we can go through them quickly, but I think you and I met with them, so I think we need to talk about some of the things that we thought were important.
Sure.
And then, obviously, they could rule out some of these and we can bring this to a study session, is that correct?
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we need some more deliberation. I was hoping you didn't want a decision tonight on that.
No decision, and I'm -- none of these address what we talked about.
Okay.
Because I don't have little parts of it, but very little, so.
We kinda wanted to do some back to the drawing board.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right. I'm glad I'm not along with that, because I don't want to offend anybody.
All of these signs would be backlit, so this is the first concept they had. It's a horizontal sign. So we have that one.
When they do this, again, it would be kinda good if we had like something with the wall behind it, since we --
Sure.
That's what it's going to be against, so in their design concept, if they could just take a picture of the wall and stick it behind this, I know they can do that.
Oh, I mean, because is it --
This would be in front of a wall.
Okay, because that was like a little plain, a little stark.
Well, it will be in front of the wall they're building up there.
Okay, all right. That helps.
So there's their first option.
But it's still low.
We did tell them that we didn't want an electronic sign and
Yes.
It is just a concept, so you could imagine the sign not being there, and they could continue that, those see-through glass panels. The stone does incorporate some of the stone that is on the hotel.
Yes.
So that could be an option that maybe you like dislike.
And Lee did ask that the stone kind of reflect the stone on the entrance to the fort as well.
Yeah, I could see that, yeah.
Go with the hotel and kind of reflect the historic nature of the entrance to the fort.
So we have this one. Here's, it says in the notes here that the one reflects Leavenworth as the first city of Kansas. It is a little more modern.
Yeah.
And honestly, no one would know that but us.
Right. And the designer did tell me that all of these would be high-quality metallic finishes, and these renderings wouldn't really do them justice, but they would be high-quality finishes. So here's another one that does have some kind of wayfinding to it. I know that Main Street's planning on doing a wayfinding sign plan in the coming month to bring to DRC, I was told today, but this one incorporates a little planter on top. This is an interesting concept. I'm seeing some head shakes.
This is a logo of one of the liquor stores in town.
Okay.
Yes, that's right.
Need I say more?
We're not, no, no Leavenworth, no Leavenworth.
Need I say more?
We're not going to do that, no.
So we do have this one with the bison buffalo on top.
To me, this one was a little bit better. I wanted something simple, but I asked that they do it not as a, not as a, just a square sign, but as an arched sign with our first city logo in the, above it.
Yeah. Out of all of them, I'd say this came the most.
Not that, the oval one, the oval one, so that it sets up, it sets up higher, because that is a high wall behind it.
Sure.
But also, I don't know about all the buffalo on it.
Yeah. I mean, this came the closest to kind of reflecting the history, you know, I don't, I, a little, I'm not sure about the buffalo.
I like the fact that it says, "Welcome to Leavenworth, first city of Kansas."
Yeah.
First city of Kansas, however, it's first city of Kansas, isn't it?
Right. I recall them showing us a concept that did have an arched top that would work really well, so I'll make note of that.
But this looks more like what we're talking about.
And then here's the last one, so, a little modern.
Yeah. It doesn't fit in, I don't think, with.
Okay, well, I think that actually gives me a lot of direction, so thank you, and if you have anything else, just let me know.
Thank you very much, Taylor.
Quick question, Mr. Tedder. Will the sign be paid out of CVB funds?
It will.
Out of hotel taxes and things like that?
Yes.
And the hotels donating the land, we're paying for the sign.
Yes. Right. Right, so he'll provide the space and then we'll put the sign there.
Where about is the location on the hotel's property?
Is right directly on the corner.
The building, the land's dirty work they've done.
Okay. It'll be on an angle, right there.
Okay, just so I can get it.
It would be pretty much right here.
Okay.
So then you'll see it as you're approaching the intersection this way, it'd be right there.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with the mayor. I think this needs to go to a study session. There's going to be all kinds of input on this, I think, not only from the commissioners, but also from the residents, so.
Okay.
I would ask the residents of watching, we're going to bring more concepts back. Influx of comments on all seven tonight's not going to do any good. We're going to bring additional designs back to the commission that will be considered.
Okay.
Comment, I have, for me to make comments on design is not my strong point, so I'll kind of refer to the other commissioners on that, but I would recommend that it be as maintenance-free as possible.
Right.
Not something that has electronics or, you know, a bunch of things that cause maintenance issues, that when it's down for a couple of days, it looks like, you know, neon light that's flashing, half the letters are missing, or something like that. Something that stand the test of time, stand the test of weather, et cetera.
And we had discussed that a little bit, and some of those faux finishes and actual fake stone supposedly holds up better than real, so we'd be looking at something like that.
They would know that, yeah, but we can discuss that more, too. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, next item on the agenda, bids, contracts, and agreements. Number three, consider bids for the 2017 sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration project.
Public Works Director Mike McDonald will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is related to the design of the sewer inflow and infiltration and a replacement, ultimately a replacement project that's been designed bounded by Metropolitan, Seneca, and Fifth Street to Broadway. This is a project that we did complete design plans and sent out for bids, and we received the bids that are presented in the policy report. However, after the policy report was prepared, we were contacted by representatives of Blue Nile Construction, who is the low-bid contractor, by a considerable amount. With the base bid, they were $345,000, and the next low bid was $690,000. They said that they have found that their bid was prepared in error, and they request that it be withdrawn from further consideration. We have an extensive surge of communications with them, asking for what specific items and what specifically was it wrong. Ultimately, they said that they cannot build it at this price, and staff has reviewed the other bids that were received, all of which were over the engineer's estimate, and our recommendation to City Commission is to reject all bids. We will repackage the project a little bit and send it out for bids again to be constructed this fall rather than late summer.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion, or would that just be withdrawn?
No, you have to make a motion to reject the bids.
To reject all the bids, okay.
I was a little concerned, too, especially because the disparity in the dollar amounts, when it's always that far apart, I worry, yeah.
Yeah. Sometimes that happens. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we reject all bids for the 2017 sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration project, and direct staff to rebid the project.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Next item, consider bids for the 2017 pavement management.
Senator Lee, staff has been working on preparing plans for pavement management for 2017. A large granite seal project was approved by the commission in May. This is the second part of the overall plan, which is to continue the repair and replacement work on 20th Street. This is the 20th Street portion of that, and we will continue the style of work that we have, we have done before, in that we're replacing curbing and gutters ahead of the product, ahead of what would be next year's project. The contractor will also be milling, overlaying, and other repairs on 20th Street, be repaired with the special asphalt paving. There's some concern that this is in front of Henry Leavenworth School. This is contractually in here for a substantial penalty, should they not be at least 200 feet away from the school by August the 4th. I believe school starts about two weeks after that, and we believe that is adequate time. But in general, the project is a pretty quick project anyway on the paving, and that is in the specifications that they will be out of the way of the opening of the school.
Okay.
We received, we received two bids. It did not make it in the policy report, but I do need to report that we did receive a third bid that was not read, as it did not have their paperwork in order, and we've felt, been working with that contractor to ensure that future bids, that their paperwork is in order.
Right.
And staff does recommend that the project be awarded to Macanany Construction.
Okay, are there any questions?
Mr. McDonald, what is the penalty per day if they do not complete it on time?
I'll ask Mike Gould for that. Come on, 2,500 per day.
Twenty, 2,500 per day for each day.
And the Macanany Construction is fully aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. McDonald?
No.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the bid for the 2017 pavement management program awarded to Macanany Construction in the amount of $810,530.65.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda, consider change order number one, contract 2017-35 with Mid America Road Builders on the 2017 granite seal contract.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is a change order that is being requested by the city. The actual amount is $32,933.85. I think there's a typo at least in one place in the policy report, that's $33,000 rather than $32. This is related to the previous agenda item in that the project awarded to Macanany, there are sufficient funds available that were allocated toward that project that can be reallocated toward the granite seal project, and there are two parts to that. One is additional, streets can be sealed approximately $24,000, and staff realized that we had failed to include striping on the portion of the project, and that is an additional $8,800. And to combine those two amounts, staff recommends approval of change order number one with Mid America Road Builders for $32,933.85.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this change order?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve change order number one, related to 2017 pavement management granite seal project in the amount of $32,933.85.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, consider inspection services agreement with the Finnis Corporation for the 2017 pavement management program.
Thank you, sir. Madam Eric Commissioners, this is a request from staff that the commission approve a limited inspection contract with the Finnis Corporation. This is related to assisting staff with inspecting of the two portions of the pavement management program for 2017. Most of the work will be performed by city staff. However, there are going to be days when there will be work going on in more locations than we can adequately staff, and this is related to having Finnis Corporation's inspectors assist with those, with those days. This is not a, not a full level of inspection, but is working with our staff to ensure that we cover the key areas. It may be somewhat changed if we don't have the sewer project going on at the same time, but still, I think it is important to have the resources available to ensure that contractors are performing as they are supposed to.
So, Mr. McDonald, are you stating that if the staff does have time, that they may be able to inspect some of these projects where it would come in less than $38,000?
The last couple of years, we have had similar contracts with the Finnis, and they have come in underneath the budgeted amounts, and they, they have been very easy to work with. Look out ahead on our staffing levels and the project, and said, "We need somebody here for three days next week," and they were able to do that.
Okay.
How many inspectors do they send down?
Typically, one, sometimes two.
And what, what's the length of the whole project?
These will be, I think the longest one in here is 75 days, once they start work.
Seems a little expensive.
Well, this will
Walking behind a piece of machinery.
These hours were estimated, assuming that we would have a sewer project going on at the same time. I suspect we will not spend as outlined here.
Okay.
No.
So just take some motion. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve engineering service contract with the Finnis Corporation in an amount not to exceed $38,000 for the 2017 pavement management inspection.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion carried. Okay. Next, the next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinances, number seven. First consideration ordinance, childcare center at 3812 Clayton Drive.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, this is a request for a special use permit to allow a childcare center at 3812 Clayton Drive. It's the property outlined in yellow up there on the screen, you can see. The properties currently zoned are 1-9, and childcare centers are allowed in home in the zoning district with issuance of a special use permit. The applicants are currently licensed by the State of Kansas for a childcare facility in their home to care for up to 12 children. The Planning Commission did review this request at their June 5th meeting and voted six to zero to recommend approval of this, subject to three conditions as recommended by staff. Those conditions were that a copy of the group daycare home license be provided annually once that's approved by the state. Second is that the operation should be limited to a maximum of 12 children, and the third is that no additional home occupations be carried out inside the home. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? The applicant, or the staff?
I don't know.
If not, is there consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, amending ordinance 8035.
Julie, you want to continue with this?
Or Carla?
I can do that, yes. This is a first consideration ordinance to amend, ordinance number 8035. 8035 was passed and approved by the governing body on March 28th. This was an ordinance that removed certain properties from the downtown, downtown square redevelopment district. That was all approved and everything.
Right.
After the fact, we discovered that there was some inaccuracies in the legal descriptions that were, was the Exhibit A to the property, they were not full legal descriptions. So all this is doing is amending that so that we can put the correct legal descriptions with that ordinance.
Right. Any other questions on this? Seems pretty clear to me.
It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Is there consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Okay, consensus to move forward. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, rezoning 4811 New Lawrence Road to R1-6.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, this is a request to rezone the property located at 4811 New Lawrence Road from R125, which is low-density single-family residential, to R16, which is high-density single-family residential. The property is outlined in yellow up on the screen. It's approximately 40.12 acres in size, and right now, it's got a vacant single-family home and associated barn located on that property. The site is right along New Lawrence Road, directly to the east of 20th Street. The rezoning is being requested to allow for the development of a new single-family subdivision. The subdivision will consist of 101 single-family lots and will be built in multiple phases. Of those 101 proposed lots, 45 will be maintenance-provided homes, and the remaining 56 will be traditional single-family homes. The, the proposed preliminary plat that was included in your packet does include the subject property that's being rezoned, as well as the property to the south that is already zoned, R16, so rezoning was not needed on that. The Planning Commission did review this at their June 5th meeting and went through the conditions of determination. I'll just go through those here pretty quickly for you. The first condition is consider the character of the neighborhood. The subject property is currently agriculture in nature with a single-family home. The property to the east is vacant and is the site of the proposed Leavenworth Business and Technology Park. Properties to the north and west are developed with large-lot, single-family homes and associated agricultural uses. And as I said again, this is located along New Lawrence Road. New Lawrence Road will be widened and improved as part of this project. The improvements will take place from 20th, at least to the northern edge of the proposed development. Most likely, we'll go a little bit further north of that. It hasn't quite been designed yet, and that improvement will be taking place at the cost of the city. Will be funded through taxes generated through the development of this project. Second consideration is the zoning and use of properties nearby. Property to the east is zoned I-1, and is, again, the site of the future Leavenworth Business and Technology Park. To the north are, and west are zoned R125, and to the south is zoned R16, and that's, again, part of the proposed preliminary plat that is part of this rezoning. The third consideration is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The property was previously used as agricultural use, and as land has developed around this and become more intense in nature and more residential, it's become less and less suited for agricultural use as it's become more and more into the city. The next consideration is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect on nearby property. 20th Street is an existing major thoroughfare that's designed to handle a high volume of traffic, and as I said, New Lawrence will be improved to handle that additional traffic as well. And single-family residential development is generally a pretty low-intensity use, so we don't anticipate any negative impact on neighboring properties. The next consideration is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant and zoned. The existing single-family home has been vacant for approximately one year. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning will have a positive impact on economic development within Leavenworth by way of an increased property tax base as this is developed into the 101 single-family homes. Next is the recommendation of permanent or professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of this request. The next is the conformance of the request to change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan. This area is identified as appropriate for low-density residential, which is defined as 7,500 to 14,000 square feet per lot. This proposed development has an average of about 9,200 square feet per lot, so it's right in the middle of that range, and so it is in conformance with the future land use plan. And the final is any other factors that may be relevant, and then just the only other factor was that a preliminary plat was considered with this by the Planning Commission. That was approved by the Planning Commission. Preliminary plats don't come to the City Commission, but you will see this as it comes through for final plat, and those lots are actually dedicated along with the associated right-of-way and easements. right-of-way and easements and such. So, again, the Planning Commission did consider this at their June 5 meeting and voted six to zero to recommend approval at that time. There were no neighbors that spoke in opposition to it, and we have heard no negative comments about it. If you have any comments, I can answer those for you now.
Any questions, comments?
Question, possibly you can't answer, but I know people live on New Lawrence Road there that have the big lots. Time Warner, or Spectrum will not service them. Will Spectrum Cable Company service these properties, or do you know?
I'm not sure.
Probably, if enough volume, maybe they will, and maybe they...
That would be my guess. I'm not sure what their threshold is.
Spectrum has indicated a willingness to serve the new Business and Technology Park, so I would assume that they're going to, but again, I don't know that much.
And do we have any hammer to force them?
It's density-based.
Yeah, I'm saying, actually, because they have a monopoly in town. I mean, can we say that must be served by cable?
Let me get back to you.
Okay, okay. This is my only question. Thank you.
Okay. My comment is, it's just nice to have a subdivision being built after a long drought.
So, is there a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda, executive session.
How much time do we need?
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Commission recess into executive session pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship exception for KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen, Subparagraph B two. The open meeting to resume in the City Commission chambers at, let's say, seven forty-five, by that clock. City Manager Paul Kramer and City Attorney Tom Dawson request to be present during the executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. We're back in session. Okay. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, rezoning nine twenty-sixth Avenue to General Business District.
Madam Mayor, Julie Hurd will refer this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, this is a request to rezon the property located at nine twenty-sixth Avenue from R-1-six, high-density, single-family residential to GBD, General Business District. Property is currently occupied with the former Medical Arts Building, which is currently vacant. The rezoning is being requested to allow for the development of Freedom Behavioral Health Hospital, which is proposed to be a twenty-four-bed, senior-adult, inpatient behavioral facility. The facility will provide geriatric mental health care for individuals on a short-term stay basis. The primary focus of care is for individuals with depression or early onset Alzheimer's or dementia. All admissions are taken by referral of another treating physician, so there will be no walk-in appointments, no clinic-type hours, and all visitation by family members is also by appointment only. There's no open visiting hours proposed. The hospital will operate under license from the Kansas State Department of Health, and Freedom Healthcare does currently operate another similar facility in Topeka. As I said, the existing building was constructed as the Medical Arts Building in nineteen fifty-six. An addition was put on in nineteen seventy-two, and it has housed various medical office uses since that time. The property is currently considered legal nonconforming, since the previous medical office uses were allowed at the time of construction, but are not currently permitted in the R-1-six zoning district under our current development regulations. The city actually didn't enact zoning until nineteen sixty-six, which was after this property was constructed. So, I'm not sure what the discussion or thought was in applying zoning at that time when it was put into place, but this was actually in place before zoning even existed in the city. The applicant will make interior modifications to the building to accommodate their care model and their security needs. There are no exterior changes proposed with this rezoning. The applicant had previously submitted a request for a special use permit to allow a nursing home facility. That was, in talking with them preliminarily, that's what staff had sort of thought the business would be. Once we got the application in and really had a chance to sit down with the applicant and find out what was going to be entailed, we realized that the proposal would fall under the definition of a hospital, as defined by our development regulations, not a nursing home. And so, it would require rezoning instead of just a special use permit, since those are defined differently in the regulations. So, notices were sent out to those property owners, again, stating that the special use permit application had been withdrawn, and new notices were sent stating that a rezoning application had been received and given the proper notification. The Planning Commission did consider the required conditions of determination for a rezoning request. I'll go through those here for you. The first is the character of the neighborhood. Again, the subject property is the site of the former Medical Arts Building, which is currently vacant. To the southeast is a multi-story medical office building. To the south of the medical office building is Saint Luke's Cushing Hospital, and the remainder of the neighborhood is single-family homes. The property is located directly on Spruce Street, which is classified as an arterial street on the master street plan, and that's designed to handle a high volume of traffic. The second is the zoning and use of properties nearby. All surrounding properties are zoned R-1-six, again, with the majority being, single-family homes and the medical office building and hospital in close proximity. The next is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Again, this property is built in nineteen fifty-six as a medical office building, with an addition done in nineteen seventy-two. It has only housed medical office uses since it was constructed, and it is unsuited for residential use. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect on surrounding properties, as this property has been used for medical uses since its inception in nineteen fifty-six. The next consideration is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant and zoned. Again, there have been medical uses in here since nineteen fifty-six. The last remaining tenant moved out approximately a month or two ago, as the owner prepared for the eventual sale of this property to Freedom Behavioral Health. The next condition is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning will have a positive effect on public health by providing a needed health service in the Leavenworth area. The next consideration is the recommendation of permanent professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of this request. The next is the conformance of the request to change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. This area is identified as appropriate for institutional uses on our future land use plan, which is the use applied to other hospitals and medical office uses. The medical office building across the street and Saint Luke's Cushing also are identified as institutional on the future land use plan. The next is any other such factors that may be relevant. There are no other factors to note. The Planning Commission heard this item at their June 5 meeting and voted four to two to recommend approval of it. A protest petition was submitted to the City Clerk's Office regarding this action, and the petition was evaluated by the City Attorney to be invalid. I can answer any questions you might have. The applicant is here as well to answer questions.
Okay.
Tom, do you want to comment on the petition?
Sure. The petition was filed, and the number of people who executed the petition was correct, but it requires someone who witnessed those signatures to execute a notarized affidavit, and that was not done. And that actually makes the petition easier to do. You don't have to have a notary for each signature.
Right.
You do have to have one.
For the person who...
One person saw all the signatures being written.
For the person who obtained the signatures, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it requires a notarized affidavit executed by the person who witnessed all the signatures, and that is missing.
Can, so, since that petition was invalid, can they resubmit a petition?
No, that time period is expired.
Okay.
So, the building is medical use to medical use. Are there any other issues that we need to talk about here with regard to this?
Well, I would like to just read one item, having reviewed the Planning Commission notes. I think it's important to bring this to the attention, not only of the people who might speak, but it can be a federal violation of federal law with regard to the sentence I'm about to read, and that is, the plaintiff can prevail in litigation in a claim alleging intentional discrimination when the plaintiff can show that a zoning decision was motivated by generalized fears or stereotypes about people with disabilities. That should not be discussed at this meeting by the public, because they have their own exposure and/or certainly by us.
Okay. Any other questions of our attorney?
I've got pretty well summed it up.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak at this time? Please state your name, and if we could just keep it to three minutes? And if you have new information, why say that?
My name is Kami Jackson. I live at seven thirteen Spruce. And thank you for letting me speak. As you'll see, this is not my forte. This is all new to me. As far as the petition goes, I came to City Hall and requested help with that. I was given a state statute to look at. I looked at it, and three other people looked at it. In the statute that I was given, I did not see where it said I had to have anything notarized by anyone anywhere along the way. With that being said, I know my petition is invalid, but we kept it to the neighborhood that is being surrounded by this here. And I was able to obtain, myself, eleven of the homeowners who were notified in opposition, and myself and one other person that helped me were able to obtain seventy-nine signatures in opposition. There were several, five people, I'm sorry, seven people who did not sign. Three wanted to research more information on their own. Two, they were resigned to the fact this was probably just a done deal. And two said, "Well, it has to go somewhere." So, I didn't have a lot of time. There was another individual that was helping me, that, helping us as a group, not just me, who also turned in some others, and I'm not sure how many they got on their petitions. But this is, for me, this is not about HMP LLC selling their property. I have no problem with them doing that. It's my concern about what's going in there. That's pure and simple, is what it is. I keep getting told this property has to be rezoned. It has to be rezoned, okay? If it has to be rezoned, does it have to go in a general business direction? Can it not be turned into an apartment or condos for sale, which would still be listed under some form of the residential status, just as they're doing with the apartment building that they're putting in over across from Haymarket? For the surrounding neighbors, this rezoning, from what I understand, is going to have an adverse effect on our property values. At least, that's what three independent realtors have expressed to me, that it is going to. The amount can't be said at this point in time. In turn, if my property and the surrounding properties lose value, then the money that will be collected in Leavenworth on a whole is going to be reduced, because our properties are going to be reduced. So, I just think this needs to have more of a look, a study, more things looked at. As far as Freedom Behavioral, we need to have an all-encompassing plan to what's going on here. This is going to be put in our city, in this area. We need to know, if patients come to them and choose not to return to where they came from, what's going to happen? Are we going to have systems in place to handle them? Are they going to...
I'd like to interrupt. If that continues with stereotypes and fear of the disability people, litigation could proceed perhaps against you.
Okay. I mean, no disrespect to anyone. I am just trying to make sure they're safe and we're safe, and our community can go hand in hand. That's all. I'm not trying to say anything against anyone with disabilities. As I said before, I'm not a professional. I don't know if Leavenworth needs this or doesn't need this. My concern is where it's being placed. It's not against them on a whole.
Yeah. It's been three minutes, please.
Oh.
Thank you, thank you. Your concerns. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Amy Reinhold. I've been a resident of Leavenworth since nineteen eighty-five. My father was in the military and retired here, and my mother grew up here. She was born and raised in this area. My mother also lives very close to this facility. I want to first express that I understand the need to put some business or something in that empty building. That is a blight. It's been empty for a long time. Absolutely, it's not doing anything good for our community, and I'm sure it's not doing any good for the individual that owns the building. I totally understand that. I'm also a proponent for mental health care, that people with mental health issues are severely underserved, not just in Leavenworth, but just in general, in our country. And I also feel like the elderly population is underserved, so I am also a proponent of that. However, there is a correct way of doing things. There are correct locations of placing things. Zoning was done for a reason. This is zoned residential because it is a residential area. That building did serve as a medical facility, absolutely. However, it was outpatient, not inpatient. Two very different things. Also, in reference to the attorney's statement about discrimination, I don't think anybody's wanting to discriminate against anybody, especially not those with disabilities. However, at the justice.gov site, their wording specifically does say, "The disability discrimination provisions of the Fair Housing Act do not extend to persons who claim to be disabled solely on the basis of having been adjudicated a juvenile delinquent, having a criminal record, or being a sex offender. Furthermore, the Fair Housing Act does not protect persons who currently use illegal drugs, persons who have been convicted of the manufacture or sell of illegal drugs, or persons with or without disabilities who present a direct threat to the persons or property of others." That's the concern.
Please, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, chairpersons. My name is Zen Daniels. I've spoken in front of the commission now. I think this is my third or fourth time. If I could, please, from the attorney, can I have the KSA or the ordinance that you use to disqualify the petition, so that I can do some research on that? Do you have it?
Not with me, but I can get it for you.
I'd appreciate it.
Maybe I do.
I've enforced KSAs for five and a half years for this county, so I'd like to research that.
Sure.
Quite good with the law. At an earlier meeting, Madam Mayor, you stated that you were going to take a tour and go and visit the Topeka facility, and I'd like to know if you did that?
No, I haven't. I didn't yet. No, I didn't.
Is that scheduled to happen?
I didn't say I was going to go. I was thinking about it. I thought it might be a good idea.
You still think it's a good idea?
No, I don't.
I appreciate your candor. The Topeka facility has been open now for several months, and as I understand, they do one-year reviews on these facilities. There would be no harm in waiting to see what the Topeka facility's inspection and results are prior to allowing them to put this facility into operation, because if they have a good system and they get a good grade from the state, then that would lessen my concerns, and I'm sure several other people's concerns greatly. But we don't have that information yet, because they haven't been there a year. Also, there's talk about that there not being walk-ins and things like that. Freedom Behavioral Health Zone flyer says that they take voluntary and involuntary admissions seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Any person who voluntarily walks into that type of facility can voluntarily check themselves out, period. It's just that simple. They stay there two or three days, get themselves leveled out on their medication, or whatever acute issue it is that they're having. They don't want to be there. They don't want to be there anymore. It's perfectly legal for them to sign themselves out and leave, and there isn't anything anybody can do to stop it, and there isn't anything anybody can do to keep them from staying right there in all of that neighborhood right there. Discrimination against persons with disabilities and violation of the Disabilities Act is something that I'm familiar with because I am a disabled American combat veteran, and I have earned my little piece of peace and quiet, and it's right there. I bought that with my VA loan, and now you want to put that right there. I think it's take into consideration that people with disabilities don't just end up in that building. There are people with disabilities all around it. They also have those same protections under the law. I would request that I got the same protection, and yet nobody can even tell me how come the petitions that we went out and had signed were disqualified from this meeting. I find that to be a little bit unfair. If the board wants to be fair about things, let's make it transparent. Show the petitions. Show the number of people that were interested. Don't try...
That was included in the packet that was published.
It is. It's online.
Okay. Well, I didn't get that packet, so I'm sorry.
It's online. It's on the city website. Anybody can obtain it.
Okay.
It's in the public.
All right. Thank you. I'll be glad to look at that. I would ask that you take some time, and let's see what happens in Topeka, and let's get a good look at what these people really are putting into this neighborhood before you make a decision. Give us that consideration at least. There's nothing wrong with tabling this decision until the Topeka facility has a review, and then we can look at that review, and then revisit this issue. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. It's fair to all parties concerned. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? If not, any questions from the commission? Or comments?
No.
Is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
The only comment I'm going to make is that because this comes under ADA laws, that we cannot refuse this by the counsel of our attorney and not even talk about a lot of this of a counsel of our attorney, and I at least think that the people who spoke, you know, at least need to know that. It's not that we don't care. It's we're highly constrained on what can and cannot be said now under this, and it's not that we don't care on that. But this is a rezoning request for General Business District, and there's a lot of uses under that list that come into play. This is also a private sale, and we don't get to dictate the buyer and seller in this transaction on that, and...
May I retort?
No, sir. I'm sorry. That I'm even going out on a limb, and they're not even comfortable with me saying the little bit that I'm saying there, and that I can't get into a back-and-forth question and answer with you, you know, in the discussion on this because of the ADA laws. I'm very sorry about that.
We're not going to back and forth.
No, no. We can't do that. I'm sorry. We've already had given open discussion, so... So is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The last item on the agenda, the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor and commission, I move for your approval claims for June 10, 2017 through June 23, 2017, in the amount of $2,993,221.44. The net amount for pay number 13 effective June 23, 2017, in the amount of $339,054.61. Fire and police pension is $11,401.34.
Senator.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Any other items for discussion tonight?
I have one other item. I know that we're coming up into budget deliberations, and I just had a request that if it's possible to get this for that, Public Works has had a lot of requests for inspections, and if there would be a way to, possible that we could track the dollar amount that's going for outside inspection services versus our in-house resources at Public Service, or at Public Works, I'm sorry. I've been thinking about it for a while, but some of the items on the agenda tonight has given me that a lot of dollar amounts have been spent, maybe losing track of that, or do we have a better handle on that? Would our in-house resources be adequate to maybe service those needs better to save us some dollar amounts? It's just that we're doing a lot of outsourcing, and I'd like a better handle on it.
We can certainly break down the number of projects and the number that we do outside inspection on, and typically, as a general rule, it's large projects at many locations, and then specialty work. Something like the Second Street Bridge with the extensive peering work that goes on there, you need a specialized person for inspection on that, but we certainly can get to you the outside inspection contracts we've done over the last year, give you an idea of how that ranks with the number of projects we do.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
I have one, just clarification for the public record. The construction or the improvement of New Lawrence Road, the conditions surrounding that have yet to be determined. Any city participation in that will be brought to the commission at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.